Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get this.
Party started.
Party started. Hey, we'll start with Suzanne with roll call.
Someone has their audio on. Okay. Mayor LaBarre?
Present.
Mayor Protam Case?
I'm here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Ott?
Here.
Councilmember Zuluaga?
Here.
Thank you. And I just want to let council know that Attorney Wilson is on Zoom with us.
Very good. And Jeff, just briefly, if you have something you need to say, just cut in because I can't see you and I will forget, so. All right, this evening, we're starting with 3A, Appointment to the Utility Advisory Committee. And I believe we have Cindy Rumsey as an appointee.
We do. Thank you, Mayor LaBarre. As council knows, we continually advertise for our open positions on our boards and commissions. The UAC Committee, Utilities Advisory Committee, has had an opening for quite some time, and we were delighted, we just received an application from Cindy Rumsey to be on this board and committee. This term is a two-year term, and her turn, this term, if she's appointed, she would be expiring on May 31 of 2024. She meets all the applicable requirements to be considered for this position, and Cindy is with us this evening in the audience to answer any council questions.
Very good. Cindy, if you wouldn't mind just coming up to the podium and just introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested on sitting on this board.
I'm Cindy Ella Rumsey. I've lived in Woodland Park 15 years. I live at 102 Lita Senda. What we took, my husband and I took the Citizens Academy a couple of years ago and really enjoyed that, learned a lot about the city. And got interested in doing something for the city. My husband is already on a board, and I thought, ah, why not? Why not water? Clean and dirty water? Why not? I'm a nurse, so I deal with lots of things, so.
Very good. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Suzanne, I have one for you. How many other board members are there? What's the total positions?
Let's see, we have.
Two currently on it. How many are, how many seats are there total?
There's one open, so Cindy would be the final one. So we have two citizens, we have two staff, and we have the mayor.
I think it's Catherine now.
Okay, so we have one council member, two staff, and then two citizens, and she, Cindy would be the third citizen.
The third citizen.
Yes. And then there would be a full board.
Okay.
And Kip would be thrilled.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you know all about water. You've been on Citizens Academy, so you're good.
No. I grew, I grew up on a farm, so we had well water, and since I've lived in the city, so anyway, no, I knew very little about water, but I'm willing to learn.
Yeah, you will learn a lot. It's a very educational board to sit on.
Good.
Yeah. Well, thank you. So counsel, can I get a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, counsel, you may vote. No, I have you in there, sir.
Oh, really?
Yes.
All right.
On my screen.
I'll catch up.
I don't know, it's not me.
Thank you, counsel. Motion has passed unanimously, and with mayor's permission, may I administer the oath of office to Ms. Rumsey?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Cindy Rumsey.
Hi, Cindy Rumsey.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Woodland Park.
Charter and the ordinances of the city of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Utility Advisory Committee.
Utility Advisory Committee. About dinner.
Congratulations.
All right, the next item is Police Department Awards, and we have the chief here for that.
Folks, you know me, I'm not used to this podium very well, so I'm gonna do this if you don't mind. Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council, Mr. Manager, thank you very much for the opportunity once again. Okay, City Clerk too. Don't be a jerk to our City Clerk.
Now that says that.
Yeah.
Don't be a jerk to the City Clerk.
As you know, it is always a pleasure and my distinct honor to come before you all to highlight the work that these men and women are doing for each and every day. Today, though, we have a little bit of a surprise. So I'm gonna show you just a little bit of a curveball at the awards. And we're gonna start out by remembering that every day we come out here and we serve this community, and we do so side by side. And the level of support that we get from all of you is quite honestly unprecedented, and I knew that with that level of support, we would all be able to come together and make the community even better, and I knew that was gonna be easy. Well, yes, we serve the community, but sometimes the community serves us. And this first award that we're gonna present is actually to a member of our community, one of our citizens. So I don't know if she's gonna cover her eyes when I start telling the story, but if Mr. Hoffman, Christopher Hoffman, would like to come up and join me, we can get into why we have him here. Not too long ago, one of our officers found themselves in need of some, shall we say, mechanical repair for a blown tire. No names mentioned because it wouldn't be fair to call out Courtney Levine. Nonetheless, we make it, we make a joke of it, but I will tell you, having been and still in that seat, blowing tires is not fun because you wonder how you're going to fix it and get the car back on the road and continue to do your job. Not too long ago, we experienced the need for that very service, and this young man, without due concern for anything else, ran out of his residence, met her on the side of Highway 24, I think near Sheridan, right? And promptly changed her tire for her without any expectation of recognition, award, or otherwise, but we felt it was right to just bring him up here and share this with all of you so that you can see how well we all work together so that I can present him, the chief's award of excellence with my appreciation, her appreciation, and our thanks. Wait a minute, we got, we got kids wanna come up?
The two young kids wanted to come up.
Oh, well, everybody wants to come on up, get pictures, come on. Yeah, I don't get to do this very often, so come on up. Yeah, this is good stuff. I think we may have the pins there, very good. But in all seriousness, sir, thank you very much for your help and your willingness to just come out and just do what you did like that, so we appreciate you. And we'll move on to the next awards if you like. We, you got your pins ready, you're good, okay. So, you know, we, we constantly preach the teamwork mentality. No one person in our organization functions on their own. It's the way the team works to get things done. It is a characteristic that I am very familiar with, and I was very happy to see is alive and well with this team as well. So this next awards that we're gonna pass out actually involves members of our team from dispatchers and officers and how they work together to get something done that I think is pretty remarkable, actually. So if dispatcher Lisa Ivy wants to come on up, join me, Corporal Levine, Officer V Hill, come on up, we'll tell the story. So, you know, we, we drive around every day, and we look around, and we keep an eye on things, and we're tasked with finding suspicious things and things that just don't look right. Well, on the particular day in question, Officer V Hill has out driving around and patrolled in his area of the city and runs through the backside of the Safeway area, and then what is it, Autozone right there? Yeah. Getting the auto parts stores figured out, like, I know one's here, one's here, but. So, you know, during the course of his patrol, he notices some folks that just kind of looked a little bit strange to him, but didn't rise to the level of really getting out to talk to them, but he just kind of put it in the back of his head. Kept on patrol. It was probably, what, several hours after that, our comp center, who was handled by Lisa that day, gets a phone call from a gentleman down in Colorado Springs who is associate, in Pueblo, waving further. So I got the geography thing, I'm working on it. I'm trying to get it. I got Daytona, I got Orlando, I got Fort Lauderdale, but. Okay, so the, the chief of.
Pueblo Mental.
Ah, the Pueblo Mental State Hospital calls us. And not so funny reason, but because they have an escapee, and this person was in their facility in lieu of incarceration for pretty serious offenses. And he went missing, so now he's running around heaven knows where. So the chief calls and asks us to put a BOLO out, which is be on the lookout for all of you folks who aren't paying attention, which Lisa promptly gets and pushes out to the officers. Well, by the time Officer V Hill hears, and then Officer Courtney gets involved in it, he realizes that the people who he saw hours ago were the very people that they were looking for. That is the proverbial needle in the haystack scenario I cannot even begin to tell you. So he hears this description and instantly queues in on it. Courtney rushes to back him up. They're working off of a cellphone ping from one of his friend's phones, I think it was, and they're figuring out that it's coming back to the area of Safeway. So they go right and hit it and find this escaped mental prisoner in 14 minutes. Well, yeah, clearly she didn't blow a tire that night. But nonetheless, as funny as it may sound, if you just step back and think about exactly what they accomplished, it is absolutely stupendous that they pulled that off in 14 minutes. So between Lisa getting the call, recognizing the urgency, pushing it out, him recognizing what he saw, her getting to back him up, 14 minutes, we have the guy in custody. Unbelievable. Well done. And from that, I'm gonna present each of you, the chief's award of excellence with my thanks and continued appreciation for your work. Thank you very much. So anyway, in closing, folks, thank you all again. Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council, thank you all very much for your time during these meetings. It really does mean a lot to us to be able to come and share these stories with you. Members of the community, members of our team, thank you for showing up to support your folks. And if anybody in the family wants to get more pictures, we'll do those back there, and thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right, next item on the agenda is Historic Preservation Committee, and our planning director is presenting that.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight since I'm the staff person that's assigned to the Historic Preservation Committee, and that is a group of residents here in our community that are charged with care and recognition and promoting historic resources here in our community. And so that particular board consists of the chairperson Larry Gwath, Larry Black, David Langley, Linda Allred, and Eric Simonsen. Steve Plute is a resident of Park County, but is quite the history buff and attends regularly our meetings, and talking to him is quite the history class, just FYI. And then I'm Councilmember Ott is the liaison to the group at this point, so thank you for that. So I say, and part of the charge of this particular committee is education and promotion of the city's historic resources. And so over the years, they have done a number of posters related to that, and they asked me to come and kind of review those with you and kind of highlight some of those, and then we have for you this evening, this year's poster that was done. And then kind of related to this, I don't know if you noticed earlier this evening, but we have framed a number of these, and they are now up in the planning office and then the lower level conference room down here so that they are readily available. So the first poster this group did was back in 2007, and the focus of that was the chimneys decided that this was a great place to start when we look at all of the various assets in our community. This poster highlights the application of native stone and the, on the cabin architecture that we find here in our community. And then kind of related to that, our cabin inventory is recognized as one of our community's strengths. So the photos here all illustrate samples of the Mason style and the available local quarry stone. Included in here are some of the outdoor fireplaces from Paradise Ranch and Dude Ranch, and there's also two historically designated buildings that are part of this poster. The next poster was done in 2011, and this provides a timeline starting in 1870, looking at our schools. I understand we had quite the collection of one-room schoolhouses in our community for many years. This was very humble beginnings from where we started, and this poster shows that evolution over time and how those have changed all the way up to more currently with Gateway Elementary and then the Woodland Park High School. So the, the pictures here illustrate the history of those buildings, and they also include a couple photos that then highlight some students and teachers from the, or over the era. In 2015, the focus that year was the mural that was, was done. This was a partnership with the Woodland Park Arts Alliance. And I understand this mural was a collaborative effort between that arts alliance, Woodland Park, Beatty Street, and the city of Woodland Park. The objective of this was to promote that mural project, which is titled "The Story of Us", and just recognize that getting this mural accomplished was quite monumental, and it was also a way of showing support to the Southern Ute for their attendance and dedic, at the dedication of the mural, and this mural was done by a local artist, Lois Sprague. In 2016, that year's poster celebrated 125 years of Woodland Park, and this is a fun comparison of a portion of our Main Street from, I think it's an undated photo of somebody else, correct me, to a more contemporary photo, and it's just interesting to see what's potentially changed over the years. And I understand from the committee that we have very limited resources in our downtown in terms of true historic buildings, and so they're very concerned with maintaining those and not having them, them lost over time through other demolitions or revisions or facade changes and such. So this particular poster was shared at the US Pass, US Pass Historical Society Patron Luncheon Celebration that year. In 2017, the focus was the log homes that we find here in our community. This was done in collaboration with Main Street. I understand part of the reason we became recognized as a Main Street community was our historical ethic. So that's, that's what led to us becoming part of that, because it's one of the focuses that the Main Street does is to really preserve and support downtowns and historic buildings. So this poster highlights a wide variety of log home construction techniques, and like I said, this definitely dovetails with the very first poster from 2007. And so the committee asked me to draw attention to some verbiage on this poster that says, "Identify, protect, and promote the Woodland Park historic fabric." And then, interesting side note, I understand that there's actually printing on the backside of the poster that lists the addresses of all of these various cabins. So in 2019, the focus was the Midland Terminal Railway. Woodland Park has been a central transportation hub and has quite the interface historically between the train and the automobile. And in this particular year, this, this terminal project was, or represents a collaborative effort between the city, US Pass Historical Society, the Historic Preservation Committee, and Main Street. The desire was to promote awareness of the importance of the railroad through Woodland Park, and then our local efforts to restore a small representation of what is left of the, the train depot. In 2020, the focus was transportation. Woodland Park has always been a point of passage on many different routes, and this poster highlights the evolution of the many modes of transportation. It was also done as a way to support the acquisition of the stagecoach and the cog rail car that we see over in Berkston Park. Photos here include what things look like to the youths on horseback, pioneer wagons, cowboys, loggers, Pike's Peak climbers, all the way up to today when we've got RVs on Highway 24. So this year's poster, I've got the most information on probably because memories are fresher, and we just got done with this. We were focusing on trails, railways, and highways, and, you know, there's so many different routes that have gone through Woodland Park. They've had a variety of different names through history. And this poster illustrates those trails, railways, and automobile ways that had led to the placemaking here of Woodland Park. These routes, like I said, have had different names, and there's been different modes of transportation using these various routes. There is the Indian Trail, the Gold Rush wagons passing through, then there's the Midland Railway. There's also a segment known as the Coast to Coast Highway, Highway 40 South currently is Highway 24. And then there's the Pike's Peak Highway, railroad lines and tunnels, all part of our transportation framework that provide a direct connection here to our city. So the, the Ocean to Ocean Highway name was a discovery thanks to our history bluff, Steve Plute. And this is an example of an opportunity to promote historic awareness and preservation at a collaborative level with Teller County and the, the story of kind of how the county came to be. And you may recall Mr. Plute in several months ago talking about the Cristola Bridge, which is one of the photos featured here in this poster. And then one of the things that's fun about this group, if you're like really into trivia, is they're very concerned with accurate preservation or accurate accounting of history so that their stories don't get morphed over time. So one of the, the points of consternation for one of our members is the Pike's Peak or bust photograph there, and some of the verbiage associated with that that, I guess our poster mentions that the 59ers and the Gold Rush is being centered north of Pike's Peak. Since this is an historical account of Woodland Park, and the poster is 100% all about Woodland Park, and Woodland Park is north of Pike's Peak, this mention of the 1859 Gold Rush might lead people to incorrectly believing that the Gold Rush was centered in our area, and that is not the case. The fact that Woodland Park did not exist during the Gold Rush, that excitement was not anywhere close to the present day Woodland Park. So he, I guess he, Mr. Plute was questioning why we even mentioned it, but it's a cool picture, so that's probably why it ended up there. So that's the, the very long disclaimer. So in front of you this evening, you each have a copy of that poster, and like I said, thank you for the opportunity to take a couple moments and just highlight the work of this committee on behalf of our community.
Thank you very much.
Karen, we think we have some folks in the audience there. I see one back there that's on the committee, if we could just recognize them.
Yeah, David Langley did join us this evening, and he did not rush to the podium, so I must have done okay with my presentation. Because it was one of those cases where I think I stepped out for a drink of water, and I came back, and I was the one that was doing this, so.
People want to get these, where can they get these?
They're available in my office, so, yeah, well, there, and I do have a couple here. If somebody would like one this evening, you're welcome to, to it, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on. Item four, none. Item five, consent calendar, 5A, approval of minutes from August 4, 18, September 1, regular city council meeting. There's also item B, approval of the July 2022 statement of expenditures. You guys need to take those separately, or we comfortable just combining that? Okay, Suzanne, they say we're comfortable combining.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
Okay, council, you need votes? Thank you, council. Motion has passed unanimously.
So even though that's the electronic for A, do we need to do B also?
I have it in the record that you've approved all of them.
Excellent.
Thank you.
On to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda.
Does the chief, chief, has anyone signed up on that sign up sheet?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get it yet. Okay. Jerry, there he is. Very good. If you'd like to come up to the podium for us?
Yeah.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi. My name is Jerry Penland. I live on Masters Drive here in Woodland Park. If you drive north on Highway 67 and look to your left, just past Stone Ridge. just past Stone Ridge Drive, you'll see something that I've seen and others have seen for months. My thought today was, I can't believe it's still there. I decided it's way past time for somebody to tell the public about what I consider a significant problem. What you see from the highway is only a small part of the problem. Not only is there one something there, but there are two much bigger somethings behind the first something that you can't see from the road. Exactly what are they? Well, the first something was a rather large pile, probably as large as one of the little homes about a half mile or so further down the road. The second pile is a much bigger pile. The third pile is a huge pile. If you put all three piles together, they would be bigger than a large two-story house. Let's see, what do I call them? They'll call them garbage piles. Maybe rubbish piles. Maybe refuse piles. Maybe slash piles. The last huge pile is more like shredded tree piles. Maybe even call them waste matter. I certainly don't want to use the wrong term here since that may kick these piles into a whole another section of our municipal code with nothing getting done. With our history of the Hayman and the Waldo Canyon fires close to us here in Woodland Park, I'm going to simply call them major fire hazards right here inside our city limits within about six tenths of a mile from my house. Interesting enough, they're only four tenths of a mile from the police station and six tenths of a mile from our fire station. From talking to some folks, these major fire hazards have been there for months and months, even with complaints and neighborhood promises that they will be removed. Apparently, it takes more than just complaints and promises for the city to take action to remove major fire hazards from inside our city limits. My question to the city is, what is your plan? With no effective action for months, I can only assume that the city's plan is to hope that somebody someday will remove them. Well, we all know that hope is not a plan. I'm not going to bore you by citing any of our laws. What I will say is that the best I can tell, this problem is covered in Title VIII Health and Safety. I don't really care who caused the problem. Put the piles there. I don't even care whose land it's on. I look to the city to quickly solve this simple problem to protect the safety of all of us. The city has the authority to demand this fire hazard be removed, these be removed, with the notice that if it isn't, the city will remove it and bill the cost of removal to whoever these major fire hazards belong to. I would personally like to see them disappear sometime in the next month before somebody decides to create a huge bonfire that could destroy our city. It would not be good for any of us to have to deal with a fire caused by the city's inaction to solve a simple problem, a problem the city has been aware of for months. Thank you for your time, listen to us citizens, and thank you for your continuing actions to keep us safe.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you, Jerry.
We will follow up with staff about that issue. Right, Suzanne, do you have anyone on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone else in the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then. Unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, ordinances on initial posting. We have eight A ordinance fourteen twenty-nine. And once again, our planning officers presenting, and remember, it's initial posting.
Yes, I have for you this evening a request to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-nine, series twenty-two on initial posting. This is an ordinance accepting conveyance of tract A of the Highlands and Paradise Woodland Park, Colorado, to the city of Woodland Park and set the public hearing for October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Very good. Council, anything or do we make a motion to get it to public hearing?
Make a motion to move to public hearing.
I'll second.
Thank you, council, you may vote. Yeah, your name.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to do it for you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't show up.
All right, we're on to item nine, public hearings. Item A, approve ordinance fourteen twenty-eight, again, Karen is presenter for that.
Thank you. So this evening, we have in front of you sure. So this evening, this evening, we have a request or a proposal in front of you related to ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, a vacation of vacating a portion of right-of-way that overlaps lot one A in the homes at Brecken Heights here in Woodland Park. Okay, that's concerning, excuse me for a second. Hope so, I started at the beginning of the presentation, thank you for your praise. So yes, considering it ordinance related to a vacation of a portion of right-of-way. So the site is located down here along Highway twenty-four in Morning Sun Drive comes in off of Highway twenty-four to the east. And Walmart is off to the the southwest from that. So this parcel as shown is undeveloped here in this property is current or on this aerial is currently under construction. And the specific area that we're going to be talking about is down here circled in red where there's a little stub of street that comes off of Morning Sun Drive. So when we look at the zoning in the area, that area is zoned multifamily suburban. And there is a portion of it that is zoned community commercial. This has been through a couple of different public hearings over the past couple of years as part of getting a subdivision plat put in place and development applications. So the plat that was reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council set up a couple of different properties here. So we've got lot one, a larger piece, a lot two, and three and four here that are but Highway twenty-four. This, at the lower end of the slide, is where Morning Sun Drive comes in. And they said that little stub that we're talking about was originally known as Aspen or Alpine Meadow Drive. And over on the further right side of this particular slide, there's a blow up of that area. And you can see how this the stub of a street kind of comes off to the side a little bit and impacts that lot one A. So as we drill in closer and look at this area, this is what you see as an exhibit attached to the proposed ordinance. And you can see where lot one A sits in here, and it's kind of an odd little shape. I think just due to the ownership of the land at the time, all these approvals were originally looked at. And this larger area here is that Alpine Meadow Drive. And to achieve a more effective or yeah, more effective lot for lot one A, the developer is now in asking that this, what we're calling parcel A, this hatched area, be vacated since technically it is a piece of right-of-way that lands within this this platted lot. So we're only asking for this little piece so that this property does have a a more effective usable lot. There are utilities in and around this area, and there is a utility easement in place, you know, on the plat that remains. So the utilities in this particular area are protected by easements. When you go out there today and you look at what's going on on the ground, this is that that area looking into the the Brecken Heights development. And it's a little bit of an odd configuration partly because of the the commercial building off to the the right. And there's a a drive that comes out of the back of that building that comes in in through here. But the area that we're talking about that lands in that lot one A really is this portion of the the photo there that I'm trying to highlight with the cursor. And a little bit different angle of that same area. So with that, as part of this application, we did send it out for referrals so that these potential, or these various utility companies that potentially have lines in and around this area had opportunity to to respond and comment. We did not receive any comments back. So we're taking that as they're comfortable that anything that they are doing is protected by the existing easements. And so when we look at our vacation criteria, the city definitely has the right to vacate right-of-ways. And when we review this against binding policies related to utilities, providing emergency service access, feasibility of road construction, maintaining access to existing lots that are but the areas to be vacated, area traffic patterns, and adjacent landowner input. All of that has been reviewed and passed those those metrics. In terms of where that piece of of land goes, in this situation, it vests entirely with that lot one A, you know, in the homes at Brecken Heights. The utility easements remain in place and are unaffected by the vacation. And we do have in front of you that ordinance that would affect that vacation change. And if this is approved, it will get recorded in the real property records. So it would be flagged by title companies in the in the future and know that that change is being made. So the Planning Commission heard this request on August eleventh. Their recommendation was approval of ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, vacating that portion of right-of-way overlapping lot one A, the homes at Brecken Heights in Woodland Park. So the bottom line conclusion here this evening is recommendation of approving and passing that. Thank you.
Thank you, council, any questions, comments for Karen?
I'm just curious, what's the value of that piece of property? Don't know.
I have no idea.
Not a lot.
Yeah, it's not usable on its own. Yeah, I don't know what a square footage, I'm sorry.
Was there any offer to pay for that piece of land from the city to purchase it from the city?
No. No, we did not offer to to purchase it. Okay.
I think he deeded us. David, I think he deeded us some trails and some open space in that development at the top end of it.
Okay. Through space, that whole hill.
Oh, yeah.
Trail. Okay.
Well, to be a Monday morning quarterback here, that's the kind of thing that would have been nice to have gotten cleaned up through the final plating process. In fact, I had one of the planning commission members, you know, comment that, oh, this is kind of a cleanup thing. And that's exactly what it is, that in an ideal world, it it would have been resolved through the plating process and you wouldn't even be seeing it at this point. Okay.
Okay. Suzanne, any hands up for this topic on Zoom? No, ma'am.
Mayor, you have to ask for public comment on this.
I am, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Just in case, I was just going to ask the chief if he had any needs on the sign of list back there.
No, I have the list now. There's no no names on the list, but I don't know if there's public comment in the audience.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say, there is a representative for the applicant here.
If they'd like to speak, they're welcome to, but I don't think council has any any concerns or questions at the time, so. All right, council, can I get a motion?
Move to approve ordinance number fourteen twenty-eight, series twenty-two, and ordinance vacating that portion of the right-of-way overlapping lot A, the homes of Brecken Heights, Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who said?
I don't care.
Thank you, Kelly.
Sorry. I didn't have any volume when I spoke.
Council, you may vote. Thank you, council, motion has passed unanimously.
Very good, we are on to item ten, new business, we have none. And now we're on to reports. And I just have a couple of events to announce. We have the Woodland Park Wind Symphony at the Ent. Woodland Park Wind Symphony will be performing at the Ent Center for the Arts, UCCS down in Colorado Springs. That'll be Sunday, September eighteenth, from four PM to five thirty PM. And tickets can be purchased online for twenty dollars. Then we have the Woodland Park High School Homecoming Parade, which is Wednesday, September twenty-first at six PM. We also have the Kiwanis Panther Pride Bingo, Wednesday, September twenty-first, at six thirty PM to nine PM at the US Pass Cultural Center. And we have Parents' Night Out, September thirtieth, from six PM to nine PM at the Woodland Aquatic Center, and that's for ages six to seventeen. And pre-registration is required, and I'm sure you can find that online at the, I'm the Parks Director, the Aquatic Center.
Me and LaBarre.
Sure.
Debbie's telling me they changed bingo to seven PM.
Oh, good, all right. So for the Kiwanis Panther Pride Bingo on Wednesday, September twenty-first, it will begin at seven PM at the US Pass Cultural Center. Thank you, Debbie. All right, council member Case.
I have nothing, thank you.
Council member Connors.
Thank you, mayor. We finished up flags for schools. That program ran for Columbine Summit and Gateway, so that was the American Legion, so it was excellent. So I appreciate everybody who showed up for that. And thanks, mayor.
Thank you, council member Nikai.
I don't have anything.
All right, council member Neil.
We had a very exciting DDA meeting earlier this month. I've wrote it out so I can go through a lot of things fast. Okay, it occurred on September sixth at seven thirty here in the chambers. The first, I, there's four topics we went through. The first was an update to Woodland Station Project, and it was provided by Mark Weaver. He's a member of the Tava House project team. He provided an update to a purchase agreement for the DDA to to begin the review. The DDA board members expressed that they wanted to work with the DDA attorneys to review it, but they were expecting the draft disposition and development agreement to come along with it. You can't approve the purchase of the land without the real terms are in the disposition and development agreement. So there was an agreement that the Tava House team would take the first crack at preparing the disposition and development agreement for our attorney. The timelines were such that there was a request for a possible special meeting later in the month. You may hear about that, Tony may be calling, Chairman Perry may be calling that. The second thing is Chair Perry let the board know that the conflict of interest training session for the DDA, because it keeps coming up, questions about a conflict of interest. It's going to be conducted on October fourth. Anybody that wants to hear what the DDA members are going to be taught, you're welcome to participate on Zoom or here in chambers. The DDA attorney is on vacation right now, and that's why it was pushed back from this current session. It was announced it was going to be this month, but it is going to be on October fourth. Because Woodland Station seems to be moving forward, Chair Perry let the board know know that it was time for the board to begin engaging on other projects because we have multiple missions for the city, not just that one small piece of property. So what he did is he asked for volunteers from the board to take on specific tasks. And there were four of them that he brought forward. The first was John Melkey was to reach out to the former chair of Lawson to obtain any specific documentation or agreements pertaining to the cog car and the stagecoach because it's placed on the property. And that does not convey that was given to the Historical Preservation Society. So that's got to be resolved. Who's going to move that if it's not incorporated in the design, although that is the intent? The second thing, Rebecca Riddell and Chair Perry will reach out to the property owners. There is one piece property that is adjacent to Joni's deli that has come out of legal litigation. And there's now for sale signs. So there is a possibility that the DDA could help the owner of that property to spruce up a building that has been known to be blighted for quite some time. And we're going to see if there might be financial assistance to get that to look better for the downtown in general. So it's a whole new project that we're going to take on with the DDA. It's on the north side of twenty four, just to the east of Joni's. There's a corner to not cross from.
Is that the pink thing?
The old Voss building, the red building. Yeah, we're trying.
Rusty, rusty is bulldozer also a consideration?
I don't know. Yeah, we're going to try to help them if there is.
Maybe we could put it with the three piles you've got.
David Harris and Chair Perry will be investigating what assistance can be obtained from the community municipal revitalization program regarding grants and other assistance to any other business in the downtown development district because it's much bigger than just Woodland Station. And the last of the volunteering work is Al Born and Chair Perry. We're going to investigate what assistance might be obtained from the downtown Colorado Incorporated organization now that the Woodland Park DDA has a paid membership. And thank you, Michael, for helping us through that. The last thing that the DDA board meeting, they were going to reach out to Aaron Basiletti to see what reimbursements of TIF funds might be possible to assist Netco. I don't know if that's happened. That was the intent of Chair Perry, just to be aware. And that concludes my report on the DDA. Ending your questions.
Very good.
All right, the Historic Preservation Committee, you guys got a little briefing tonight. Hope everybody takes their posters home because it was noted in the past that some people didn't. So. So our next meeting will be October third. The last meeting, we talked about the next year's work plan, abatement in the in the Woodland Station there. Looks like we had some some estimates and now that we've kind of waited to do that, they came a little higher, but they're going to work with us on that. And it looks like we're going to be in budget for that to start making that happen hopefully. So that'd be a really good thing. And just a note that coming ahead in May is going to be the Historical Preservation Month. So you'll probably see a banner or two up around the city, but just something to think about in the future. That's all I have.
Very good. The posters are nice.
I'll be taking mine home.
Thank you.
Councilmembers.
I have nothing to report from keep Woodland Park beautiful this month.
Okay, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening and I'll be sure and pick up my poster when I'm there at the next meeting.
Excellent. Michael.
I just would like to say that we we said goodbye to Rob weeks ago. We're excited to announce that Ms. Grace Johnson is our new assistant city manager.
Oh, yay.
And she'll be taking on lots of fun and exciting things, but not IT.
She's a new Rob.
That's all I got.
Very good. Anyone else?
Sarah, good IT.
Yeah.
Aaron's still got IT.
Well, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. I think that's a record for time, too, y'all.